Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session so we can get you in and get you out at a reasonable time before my legs start telling me enough's enough. First item is the budget update, and it's Christine, you doing that? Or is Eric doing that?
I will do that, Mayor.
Okay.
First, we'll start talking a little bit about the current year's budget, which we've been updating you periodically since the shutdown and stay-at-home orders for COVID-19 started. We talked a little bit about it at the March 30th work session, as well as a memo that Eric sent out April 10th to talk kind of about our plan for the year. And through our monthly revenue reports, which the last report that I sent out was for May, we provided some information that right now, we're actually in pretty good shape for this year, but mostly primarily due to the fact that we sold the cellphone easement here at Central Park. Without that payment, we would be $436,000 or 2.4% below budget. So, you know, when we first started doing our forecast, we were like, what would happen or what would we need to plan for if our revenues were off by 30, up to 30%? So luckily, we have not had to face that. And as you've seen in the reports, the sales tax has still been strong. So we haven't seen the drop-off in sales tax that we expected from the closing of, you know, of so many retail outlets and restaurants during the stay-at-home period. To offset the reductions in revenue that we were anticipating, we asked all the departments to cut each category aside from personnel in their budgets. And so, we've put that together, and that will be in a budget amendment that will come before you on July 20th to make sure that we memorialize the cuts that we're making and can better keep track of them in the way they show up in our reports. So, these are things that we've talked about along the way. So luckily, what we have at this point nearing July, which will do the June numbers here in a couple of weeks, is that it's been better than what we anticipated when we first went into the shutdown. So we hope that continues. Using that information to go into what we're preparing for, for the 2021 budget, we will present that or distribute that to the City Council on August 1st as required by the Charter. And our approach for that has been to extend these trends that we've seen in the revenues being down into next year, and then making reductions in expenditures where we can make the reductions in the budget without impacting operations. So most of the reductions in budget for next year come in capital outlay. So the budget that's presented to you will stay in compliance with our collective bargaining agreements that we currently have in place, so we'll budget for raises next year. We'll put a date on those, that we'll evaluate that by January 1st to make sure that the money and funds are available in next year's budget to still be able to give those raises, as well as to not propose that we eliminate any positions in next year's budget. So that's how we're starting off the budget. Now, we know that that will create a spending down of some reserves to be able to do that, because what we're, it still projects that our revenues will be less than our expenditures next year, but we would take first from the unassigned fund balance to help balance the budget for next year. So we're gonna keep updating this as we have been with information every month, and as the questions arrive as well as to how we're doing and what we're tracking. So, we hope to have the June revenue report out to you by about the 15th of July.
Are there any questions, Ms. Christine? Yes?
I've got a couple of questions. Christine, you said we're 400,000, 400,000 under budget. Where is the bulk of that coming from? I think you said sales tax numbers are high.
Yeah, the tax revenue in total is, makes up 381,000 of that. And while it's not the sales tax that's down, we have property taxes that are down, mostly due to protested taxes from last year, as well as franchise tax revenue. So when the city also made the decision to not shut off utilities for non-payment or people that have gotten, the other utilities did that as well. So we haven't received as many payments yet from Evergy for the electricity utilities and MGE for gas electricity. But so, it's most, it's tax revenue, but not sales tax revenue that's down.
Do we expect that, for example, the property tax and some of the protests, we will get that money at some point? We just haven't got it yet.
Yeah, and it could be a reduced amount if the Board of Equalization does change the values that underlie those taxes. And we should also be able to make up for franchise taxes as well, once people are start, starting to make payments and be able to catch up on that.
So if that's the case, why are we projecting lower revenues for next year when, what you've told me is our sales tax numbers are high and we expect to recover what we're missing right now? Why are we projecting something lower into next year?
Well, it's mostly being conservative and knowing what we can, you know, project and assuming that not everything will come back at 100%. So, we're being somewhat optimistic, but not optimistic that we'll be able to regain it all in the next 12 months.
And then, on the same line of that, then, if we're 400,000 under budget now, why are we taking the approach of cutting this budget year rather than using reserves now, instead of waiting until next budget year to tap into that?
Well, we can always spend the money later. So the, the capital items that we are holding off on is just not spending them now. We can always spend them later, but if we spend them now and things turn worse, then we can't get that money back. So that's just our approach for how to be conservative and still be able to spend the money when it's there, but just taking our time getting there, since there's so much unknown.
Well, I think my concern is now is we're taking an approach that, that things are, we're taking, I guess maybe a cautiously optimistic approach, I guess is what I'm hearing from you. To me, it sounds like a pessimistic approach, and I'm not inclined to, even, even the one, the budget amendment you're talking about for next month, I'm not inclined to support that until we have a little bit more information. Right now, I'm hearing everything sounds very positive, and that our budget numbers are at or above budget with sales tax and the other things we can recover. So I'm not looking for a budget next year that's going to be as pessimistic as what it's sounding like I'm hearing from staff. I still have expectations similar to what they were even six months ago, going into the next budget year. And so I'm concerned that the approach we're hearing is we're gonna cut now and just hope we don't have to cut later, rather than the numbers that look like to me are pretty positive.
I hope you're right.
Yeah, well, I'm going to support and vote based on those, those perspectives. I'm not going to hope that it's gonna be negative.
No, I understand, and your staff here has always taken a conservative approach to developing the budget, which is why at the end of most years, there's some money that we're able to build to the unassigned fund balance. And we are, we're in untested times. And being in untested times means that we need to be very cautious, because as Christine stated earlier, our goal here is to keep our workforce employed. And I hope that, I hope we're able to do that, but we don't know. And we haven't, due to the, the cycle of our fiscal year, we have not yet seen what we sit around and talk about every day, and that's like, well, when is the other shoe gonna drop? And when are we gonna see what we think we're gonna see? So, you know what? It's like I say every year, I present the budget to you on August 1st, and when you have the budget, you can do what you want to do with it. I'm, I'm gonna try to position this city to be the best it can be fiscally.
Christine, can you hear me okay?
I can.
The numbers that you are, that you gave are the same numbers that were on the email that you sent out a week or 10 days ago?
That's correct.
Is that correct? A week ago, let's say?
Mm-hmm.
So those numbers were generated, how active were they? You sent them out a week ago, let's say that on the 20th of June. Were those numbers current to the 20th of June, or were they current to the 31st of May?
31st of May.
They were current to the 31st of May, the downturn. We had the, the shutdown, if you will, or whatever you want to call it, basically the 1st of April, maybe the 25th of March. So we had about 60 to 70 days of shutdown to create this issue that we have with, you know, the fines and all of that stuff. We don't have the effects of June. We don't have the effects of next week when we go to all masks, which will shut down stuff. So, it, to me, I like the conservative approach, because I think it's probably the realistic approach, because we don't have those numbers. Those, we haven't been in this a very long time. And Eric said, wait till the next shoe drops, the shoe's gonna drop. A lot of our sales taxes, increasing grocery spending, I think, is it not?
It is.
Gasoline taxes down, licensing taxes are down, automobile sales taxes are gonna go down, if there's any reflection of what's going on in Detroit and the rest of the world. So by golly, I get it, let's be optimistic, but man, I'd sure hate to budget money we don't have. I'm not saying we should cut people, we should cut services, but I'd sure hate to start drawing into stuff we don't have and then find out that we did the wrong thing. That's my two cents worth of pessimistic optimism, Chris.
Yeah, maybe I'm gonna oversimplify this. We have a reserve. To me, the reserve is for emergency. We are not in emergency. We are still in a position where we can control. And as we decrease our expense, our spending, update our budget a little bit to reflect our current situation, keep that reserve, because tomorrow, or the next day, or the next week, we may have to have that reserve. And you can't say, well, we'll spend the reserve because I'm being very optimistic and I know we'll be in better shape two months from now. You don't know that. So you need to have that reserve in order to continue to function and provide the basic services. We have an obligation to do that to our community.
Anyone else?
If I, if I may. So Christine, and Galen, you're right, you don't know what goes on the budget. They project the budget, but they're not, they're just projecting it's like a crystal ball and say, this is kind of what, based on what we're doing. And Eric, I think you made a good point in that, we're in unknown times, so it's all kind of conjure and projection and stuff. Do you have an idea when property tax, because isn't that coming up on the deadline where they have to settle, or they have to give them the, what they had the year before?
You know, I'm not-
Or am I off on that? I thought that was coming up quick in like, in August or sometime?
It usually is, and I'm not sure how the shutdown or COVID has affected that schedule. So I'm not up to speed on that, but I can check into that.
Okay. So we will, maybe by fourth quarter, we should be getting that money in?
Typically, we do. In a typical year, we would, after the protests are all handled.
And then, in our current budget, we have set aside reserve funds, as Councilman Culpepper mentioned, and we have yet to tap those other than the unassigned, unreserved fund, which I think we originally had projected at 400,000, and I know we've probably spent at least half of that?
Yeah.
Or am I off on that?
I think so. We also allocated in the first budget amendment additional funds for capital outlay that we're now putting on hold, so I'd have to get an updated number based on those changes.
So we've kind of run through that money, then? Okay. In the projections that you're doing, and we're starting on next year's budget, I'm assuming that we are still using the 30% emergency funds being held out for reserve?
Well, that's the, the priority that we would use for next year's budget. So right now, our initial run of numbers shows that we're gonna be between 1 and 1/2 and $2 million in less revenues and expenditures for next year. That's our first, first projection. And we'll look at those numbers closely and update those with the actual numbers that we receive through June, and we'll start working on that next week. With that, we would be spending down from reserves, anywhere between a million and 2 million next year, if the, if the revenue projections are what we project them to be next year.
Okay. Well, based on this year's funds, I mean, that's pretty much an acceptable figure, I think, that we've got the money, we have it, beans reserves have never been used. So if, if the budget is, projected budget is lower next year because you're being conservative, then therefore our reserves will be lower next year because of the 30% figure?
Yeah, so if I am being too conservative, and the numbers come in higher, we would not have to use reserves. But if the conservative numbers are saying that the revenues would drop, then we would use some reserves next year, because we're not proposing to make significant cuts in expenditures to match the revenues that we're projecting.
So I guess, I guess where my mind's going with this, and it, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we were at this year's budget at 30%, and really haven't touched the, you know, fund stabilization balance and the emergency disaster, whatever, those monies are there, this year's budget was fairly, was fairly large. If we drop down, next year's budget being reduced, and we reduce those emergencies that we're required to keep, what happens to the difference between the two?
If we change the level of reserves from 30% to some other number, it would just go into unassigned fund balance.
Okay. Now, I'm not saying change, but I mean, if you're, if you're at a 70, $70 million budget this year, say, next year you drop it down to $60 million budget projected, say, that's, 30% of that is different, and there's a difference amount of money there that wouldn't be able to roll in to do something to get us taken care of.
Yeah, that's correct. More than likely, when, I haven't done the calculation for what we're projecting expenditures, but when we do that 30% calculation, it is based on operating expenses, so payroll, supplies and materials and contractual services. We don't include capital outlay.
You don't do include, okay, good. Well, then that answers that question, then, thank you.
It'll stay close to the same amount.
Yeah, I was kind of trying to figure out where all this goes to. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, did you need to come back again?
Can I ask one, one quick question?
Go ahead.
Don't mind. So on a, on a normal year, if we, if we could divide the first five months of the year and multiply that, how do you want to do it? Divide that by five and then multiply that times 12? Can each, in other words, can the first five months of a year project what we're gonna do for the rest of the year? Or the first nine months of the year, I guess?
I think big picture-wise, you could use that as an estimate, but what happens is all of our property taxes are received in that first five, the majority of our property taxes are received in the first five months of the year, because they're due by December 31st. So people start paying them in November, December, January, so we get, you know, probably 85% of our property tax budget early in the year. So in one sense, we definitely know that number, but we couldn't just take it, take that receipts in the first five months and multiply it out for the whole year, if that makes sense.
So I guess where I'm going with that is if we, if we disregard property tax, and we assume there's a normal there.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't think we're gonna shut down property tax.
Right.
And we took the months of, from March, April, May, and we use those three months as our basis. Can we multiply, multiply that times four and get a budget out of that?
That is a, that is kind of how we do the budget each year, but we use the 12 months from the previous three years to project out for the next year.
Since the previous three years don't exist anymore, that's where I'm kind of coming from on how you could project on a pessimistic, optimistic way, what might happen if the next nine months are the same as the last three months? And then you add the property tax and come up with a nice conservative, optimistic number, would we not have a better handle on what to expect if that next shoe does not drop? It just stays the way it is?
Yes. Yes. That's how, and that's kind of what we've done when we projected for next year's budget, is we had a couple of bad months, but I didn't say those bad months are gonna be for the next 12. We kind of tried to, you know, kind of level it out a little bit, so it could get a lot worse, but it's not gonna be, we don't project that it will be what we've seen in these, these two recent months.
Okay.
Yeah. We didn't take the worst-case scenario for next year's budget.
Okay, before we move on, I'm very pleased with how staff has handled this, because we have not had to furlough any employees. There are a number of municipalities in this region that have had, have laid people off, had them take mandatory downtime. And I know the City of Independence, because their budget period is not October 1, I think it's July 1, they had to borrow money from their utility fund just to be able to make it to the end of this fiscal year. So I think conservative is certainly something that I don't want us to change on. I'd rather have it and not need it, and need it and not have it, to be able to support what we're doing with our employees, as well as our citizens, and providing them the services that they've come to expect. Okay, thank you, Christine, for answering those questions for everyone. Next, we'll move on to the COVID-19 CARES Fund, distribution which there was an announcement today, which was a little disappointing to me, but that's okay. And I give my editorial later on. Who, you wanna handle that one? Who's handling that one? Chris?
Your Honor, this will be Christine as well.
Christine as well, okay.
This can be a team effort.
The next item on the agenda will be Chris Sandy. And so Christine gets to have a lot of attention right out of the gate tonight, right?
All about the money, right?
How about that? And you know what? She's doing a fine job. I'm glad she's on the team.
So the county legislature approved today the city's allocation, which is gonna be $3.2 million. I think the initial press release that came out a couple of weeks ago indicated that it was gonna be 4.8 million, but that, through some negotiation and changes, they got that down to 3.2 million, based on the population of the city. So, there will be an agreement that the city will approve with the county. They've asked us to submit a budget as to how we will spend that money, and then we can choose whether to get the money in a lump sum or reimbursed, because we're subject to all the spending requirements. So, I got a copy of the Independence budget, where they've broken it down to the categories that we can use, and as well as a guide, guidelines for how the CARES money can be spent for local governments, and then an FAQ. And I was downloading those today when I got back in the office after I saw that they had approved that at the legislature, and so I'll email that to everyone as soon as I can get that done, so that we can kind of see the categories, what they say. The FAQs are really good. The FAQs, of course, are longer than the actual guidelines, because that's when people are asking specific questions about what we can do. We'll make some recommendations as well. Staff will have some recommendations based on some of the categories, but then we would like to get priorities from the City Council as to how that money is spent and how we can make sure it fits into the, the allocation, as well as to meet the guidelines for the spending.
Okay, any questions about that CARES funds? Yes, Susan?
Yes. I know, Christine, you and I have talked about this before, but in a, in a situation like Independence, because they have their own utilities, it's, it's a little different than what we have. So are we going to be in a position to be able to help people utility-wise, since it's a separate entity, a pro, for-profit entity?
Yes, I actually looked through the FAQs, and you'll, you'll get a copy of that as well. It said, well, it says you can send it to, you can distribute money to a nonprofit for distribution of things like utilities, rent payments, to avoid evictions and things like that. So the way it's set up is it can be distributed to a nonprofit to handle that, but I don't think, the way I read it, and I'll read it more carefully, that we could make a payment to Ever, Evergy or some other utility on behalf of our residents.
Right, because when, when, once you hand that money over to another entity, you lose complete control of those funds.
Yeah.
Which I have some questions about.
Yeah, and I would hope that, other people have already created those processes, that we could mirror to make sure that we can track it and that the requests are appropriate, and that we have a follow-up and a reporting to see how the, the funds were distributed.
Did any of the nonprofits receive any funding from this, or was it strictly to the cities?
Today's ordinance was just to the cities. There is a dashboard, Jackson County has a dashboard to show how they're spending the whole 122 million dollars, so that can be reviewed too, and I can maybe send you the link for that, that shows how you can go in and see where the payments have been made. But so far, it looks like most of the payments have been made to the Health Department and the hospitals.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Jared?
So you're gonna, you're gonna show us that dashboard, or give us a link to that dashboard, is that correct?
Yes, I will. Yeah, I'll include it in the email that I send to you with the allocation amounts and the guidelines for using it.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go on record right here. I haven't been unhappy with the county since all this has been going on. I'm not happy with not being transparent and being able to find out things and find it out on Facebook and other means and not being told directly. I think this is, out of 122 million, they want to cut 1.6 million, and they want to hold the funds till who knows when. I, I, I'm not, I just don't understand it, and I know you all are doing your best there, you don't have any understanding there, but I just want to be on record, I'm not happy with county at all. I'll leave it at that, before I get in trouble.
Can I ask a question, too? So Christine, the original that was in the newspaper was 4. what?
4.8 million.
4.8 million, and what was that speculative term based, amount based on?
I think what they did initially was they took all of the cities in Jackson County and their population, and took half of the 122 million and split it among those cities. So, that's what they did initially. Now, they limited it this time to 4 million, 40 million, sorry, excuse me, 40 million allocation, instead of 50, 50, 61 million. So they reduced it, that allocation by 21 million.
So this 33% decrease was a real decrease, or was it originally supposed to be based upon population at the beginning?
You know, I'm not sure what the requirements were or the discussions were when the county received the, the original 122 million and how it would be distributed. I know that it can be distributed based on population, but I don't know that it has to be.
I thought you said it was based on population.
It was. But, and they did, but they chose the amount to distribute based on the population. So they chose 40 million instead of half of it, like, like Frank White suggested in his press release.
Okay. I, I would like to say, I appreciate you doing that and being very careful with the numbers, and my council member Taylor said you're doing a great job with that. So what I'm about to say is, Jerry, I shake your hand on that, and I'm right with you on being upset about this. I don't know where, it seems like everything goes off into the blue, and we hear, we hear stuff backwards and forwards, and it's just, just not right. I want to know where that other 1.6 million dollars goes. I want to know it tonight, but we don't get a know-it tonight. We probably won't get a know-it until we have a new, no, I shouldn't say that, until we have something changed at the county. And I, I guess we're being recorded, so I want to go with you on that one, Jerry. I absolutely, absolutely agree with that. It's, it's a travesty. That's it.
Anyone else?
I'll just echo in here, why not? I've talked to some different cities, and they're all having the same frustrations we are, because the rules kept changing. It was gonna be based on this, and then it was gonna be based on that, and I know some communities went ahead and did these huge schematics and worked up all this paperwork, and then they were told, no, we're not gonna do it that way. So, it is a problem at the county level, and they can't seem to land and make a decision and stick with it. The decision has changed multiple times, so.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Christine, again. Are you up again?
Your Honor, it's gonna be Chris Sandy, and I just want to give, Chris is gonna take some time here to give an update about Phase 3 Jackson County and kind of where we are in terms of reopening our facilities. We have been working toward a July 6 meeting with reopening City Hall, but the term that I've been using a lot these days is, it's fluid, it's moving, and we may get new information this week. We have a 2 o'clock conference call tomorrow with Troy Shulte, Shulte and Bridget Schaefer and other members of the Jackson County team and other city administrators, managers in the area, and there may be new information that comes out of that. But Chris has been kind of running point on this information for us, so he's gonna give you an update as best he can.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Eric said, I have been kind of the point person on this since it started, and I've been working with several different organizations throughout the course to try and gather information and intelligence, if you will, on where we're at and what we've got. As you recall, early on, you were getting many synopsis of meetings that I was in from the Metro Emergency Managers Committee, the Division of Health and Human Services, the Jackson County Health Department, County Administrators Call, the Governor's Update, so on and so forth. As you notice, this has kind of dropped off as of, as of recently. As the numbers have gone down, the information changing has kind of been static, until most recently, in the last week to 10 days, we've noticed that there is an uptick in the numbers. And many people have said that the uptick in the numbers doesn't really count, because we're doing a lot more tests, and since we're doing more tests, we're gonna have more positives, which is correct. However, the numbers to watch, which I've started including in the email that I sent in the morning, is the hospitalizations. I'm sure that some of you have seen the news reports out of Houston and Texas, where they are now running at 88% of their ICU beds. And so they're getting critically close to being kind of in the situation New York was, where they're gonna run out of available hospitals and care for people who have COVID, and that also affects people who have acute emergent situations like strokes, heart attacks, and those kind of things. We don't have that here yet, but we are watching it. If you look at the Jackson County website that is ticked on your, your email, if you go in and look at it, it will show you that we've gone from an average of a case about every, every three days, .33 or so, to .5, to .57, to today, it went up to one case per day, which doesn't sound a lot, like a lot, except for the fact that it is starting to roll up. Our trend line, which was headed down, flattened, and now it is slightly going up. Hospitalizations are also, are going up as well. So, that's the concern, and that's why I believe Jackson County came out with the requirement for masks. Kansas City did so, along with Wyandotte County, Johnson County, now the state of, the entire state of Kansas. Kansas City did so along with Wyandotte County, Johnson County, now the state of, the entire state of Kansas is going to go to masks inside and out and taking care of that. It's a fluid situation. We're still learning exactly what, how the virus spreads, for sure. There's been conjecture about whether if you touch things and how long it stays on there, whether it's simply just particulates coming out of your mouth and out of your lungs or if there's other secretions that could be a problem. We're monitoring it, trying to get the best information we can. And unfortunately, if you're listening to social media or the mainstream media, there are so many different philosophies, theories, that it really makes it confusing to try and drill down on what you have. Testing is one of those that, that's an issue that some people think that every test that's taken counts on that test count list, which it does not. Um, according to Jackson County, when they do tests, if you have a negative test and a positive test, those are combined and that's still just one test. It's a unique test for that individual. If you go back and you have two negatives and then, and then a positive, then you are two tests for that person. But they do track that and that's part of the tracing process that Jackson County is doing. So that the numbers that you see are more representative of what's actually out there, so they're not overinflated. Now, some of the early numbers may have been because they did not have contact tracing in place, but it's getting better. To go along with all that information, we developed a reopening plan that we were planning on doing on July sixth. Well, as Eric said, it's a very fluid situation. So now with the new information, I think that will be put on hold at least until the twelve to fifteen days is up to get us to July fifteenth on the masks and we'll have to look and see where we're at. Our plan is to give our staff a week's notice to prepare and be ready, more mentally than physically. We have barriers in place, we have masks, we have sanitizers. The buildings are all set with the appropriate social distancing items. We've gone through the Jackson County protocol. We've been recognized for meeting the requirements. If you notice the doorways or the entryways in all the city buildings, they have the Jackson County certificate there along with the social distancing report. So we've, we've, we're prepared and we're ready. We're just waiting for the conditions to be right to open back up.
Any questions to Chris?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, first off, Chris, my compliments to you, since I guess you were put on point on this thing. You've done an excellent job of relaying information to us and providing those links that we can go to. It was much needed, at least on my part, and I'm sure the rest of the council may feel the same. I don't want to speak for all of you. But I really do appreciate all the effort you put into this, uh, to get that information and keep us informed. Because as you stated, there's so much out there, social media and the different reports you get from different medias. It can be confusing, not only to us with our information that we get, but to our constituents that are out there trying to field their way through this once in a lifetime type thing, so to speak. So my compliments to you. Thank you for doing that. It was greatly needed and, and I deeply appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we can all echo that. Teresa's done a just a magnificent job doing all that stuff.
The thing is that so many people rely on us for the information, which we would not have if Chris hadn't done those reports for us. I get emails almost every day from a whole group of people who want that information and it's so nice to be able to say, yes, we have it. So thank you, Chris.
No one else? Okay, thank you, Chris. Strategic plan, who's that?
That would be you guys.
We should have a strategic plan. There we go.
Just, uh, this, this can be a quick update. It has been five years, believe it or not, since you did your, uh, strategic plan framework. Uh, and you will recall that we hired Shaki Consulting to do that work and we had the meetings at the Adams Point Conference Center. And so it's, it's time to do that update and we're, we are still anticipating we're gonna do that. This year we will be using ETC Institute to do the facilitation on that project. And so we're looking at a late August, early September timeframe for doing that. And in, in advance of that, we are going to do a local business community survey. So you know, we, we do the citizen survey and we've not done a business survey. So we're gonna do a business survey in advance of the strategic plan. And we're gonna ask our local businesses very important questions about how they're doing. What, what do they need? What would they like to see? I've heard a lot of positive feedback about the changes that have allowed businesses to have tables and chairs outside in parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're gonna try to get that information to you in advance of that, of whatever date we pick. So that that can be hopefully helpful to you as you begin to plan the next five years of what this community looks like and what we're gonna be focusing our priorities on. So I just want to let you know, we're setting that in motion and it's gonna soon be July first and before you know it, it'll be the end of August.
Shaki brought pennies. What will they bring?
What's that?
Shaki brought some pennies for us to play with.
Eric?
You remember that?
Yes.
I think Eric is probably on it. I mean, Galen's on the one that wasn't there. Far that, I believe. Oh, you weren't there, Jerry?
Nope.
Okay, yeah, Jerry and Galen.
So personal question, because I didn't expect that. Uh, when's the budget? When are we gonna do the budget?
The, the budget is gonna be, um, it's required to be delivered to you August first.
Okay, and then you're saying this is gonna be the first week or the last week of August?
It will be, it, correct.
Or the first week of September?
Could be.
So my personal question is, when are you gonna let us know? Cause some of us already have trips planned and I, I gotta get it changed fast.
When would you like it to be?
I would like it to not incorporate any of the week around Labor Day. But that's a personal question. I, I mean, we got the budget. I knew the budget was in August, so I'm avoiding August. And then Labor Day is a good time for people to get out of town because there's nothing going on. So I would assume a lot of people feel that way. So in my book, it would be like the, just throw it out there, the tenth of September or later.
Could be.
Uh, but that's a personal question. I, we didn't come here for that, but I, I'm just curious.
Sometimes in the past, we have done first reading on the first Monday in September and the second reading on the second. Is that, we were planning?
You're, you're talking about the budget.
Right, the budget as well.
Right, right.
Right, this, this meeting because that'll be, yeah.
So if he wanted to make sure he made the second reading, he'd have to be here at the second meeting then also.
I won't miss a council meeting.
Okay, okay.
Yours is strictly for the strategic plan.
That's correct. I don't want to miss that either. I just, it's too important. I don't want to miss it.
We're, we will work with everybody's schedules and we'll figure it out.
Thanks.
We'll make it work.
Yeah.
Okay, move on. Citizens comments during? Oh, you have something? Okay.
Well, um, so I, I guess this, so this is just a plan, the strategic meeting then. This line item on here is just a sort of data there?
I, I think this is just to notify us that it's been five years and time to do it again.
Okay, alright.
And so a lot of specifics will be developed over a period of time.
That is, that is correct. Ju- just, this is putting it on your radar that it's coming up and it's time to do it. We need to do it. And we have two members on the city council who weren't part of the last team that developed the plan. And so it's, it's time and we need to get everybody's input and there's been a lot of stuff that's happened over the last five years. And Duncan Road looks beautiful.
It does.
Okay, move on. Uh, citizens come in doing council meeting, I think Kent, that's a question you had had.
Oh, that one, okay. Um, yeah, had to get caught up. I was thinking of something else, sorry.
He was still on Duncan Road.
And I, you know, this is just kind of my personal opinion, kind of going off of what you had said. I would like to see us move citizens' comments brought to after the consent agenda. And, and my logic is that a lot of times citizens come in, they want to make a statement or something about what's going on and we make them sit and wait through the entire meeting. And so depending on the meeting, it could be short, but sometimes it can be long and they're sitting there kind of just stewing about it. To me, it would be better to get those comments up front. And again, sometimes we do something where they, we're looking at passing something or approving something and they can comment it on the end of the, at the end of the meeting, after we passed it, which just further hacks them off sometimes if they're not in favor of it. Or if they are in favor of it, you know, they, they sat around all that time and, you know, was gonna say something about it positive and then they don't get a chance to do that. So either way, I think we kind of disappoint them. So, um, and I know the agenda is set by you and it's your privy, what you do with it. But my suggestion would be to let's move that, if we could, to right after the consent agenda. That logically to me would be where it'd be a good spot to get it and then get that out of the way and then roll into stuff and go.
You know, and, and again, I, I don't have a real problem with it. If it gets to be a problem where it starts to get drawn out, I'm gonna put a time limit.
Well, and, yeah, I fully agree with the time limit and you do a good job of saying, you know, uh, let's keep this short, keep it back. Same kind of principle that we've been doing now that generally when somebody comes up and talks for us, we're there to listen, not necessarily to debate or comment. And I think that's a good example that we've had going for a long time. Ron knows more about that than I do, but I, you know, in twelve years, that's usually typically what we do is we like to listen to input. You may have a comment on it or refer it to staff or something, but we don't engage in, in, in debate or very rarely, very rarely.
Let's try that and see how it works. If it gets to be a problem, I'll change it back.
I, I think you have to almost have a rule though, that if it's gonna be a public hearing, they don't, they don't, they have to wait till the public hearing because then they'll be offering all kinds of testimony off record and that would be a problem, so.
Yeah, that would have, that's, that's a good point. Yeah, because they would have an opportunity to have.
They will use every opportunity they get.
That's why, that's why Ron's the legend on this staff. He's got that vast experience.
I just saw Jackie sitting out there and I knew where she was gonna go.
Yes. Okay, let's, let's see if we can work something out with that.
Thank you.
Uh, Your, Your Honor, before we move on, would that be something that we want to attempt to address at the July sixth city council meeting?
Uh, that might be a little soon for me to factor that in, so yeah, let's wait.
Okay, so the second meeting in July?
Yeah, well, now let's move it out to August, I mean to October, beginning of a new fiscal year. Or September. I'm losing track of what the months are.
So.
Okay, uh, so we going to?
So our city clerk, we're gonna be, first meeting in October is when we would?
Yeah, let's just do it. Yeah, starting the new fiscal year, we'll, 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 we'll move it to then. First meeting in October. Okay, clear as mud?
Why are we doing, why are we waiting till October?
Cause that's a decision I just made, that this one we're gonna wait and start trying to do that to get acclimated to what I want to try to handle this thing. So I'm trying to accommodate Councilmember Edmondson by doing, by doing it period.
I appreciate the fact that you're actually considering changing your agenda format that you've had all these years in going that. So I'm not gonna buck it as you're going to put it off that far.
Yeah.
At least you're considering it and we're talking about doing it. Let's go forward and see how it works.
Yes.
So I would support you on that.
Okay. Boards and commissions. Review, what does that mean? What does that mean?
Who do you want to?
Go ahead, jump in here.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in, kind of add a little on it. I think the boards and commissions, uh, we have a lot of folk. I'll just kind of start and go. But a lot of folks on the boards and commissions who have been on boards and commissions for a long time. We have, uh, good attendance and we have bad attendance. And we have attendance, we have people on boards and commissions who represent, uh, and I'm not gonna start naming names. I don't want to do that. But if you look at the, the makeup of some of the boards and commissions, they make up a, a different segment of this, of a group. It's like, it'd be like, pick somebody out that might want to affect a, uh, I don't know, let's just say the pub, the, the Solid Waste Commission. It's like we would have all Solid Waste people on it as opposed to somebody over in the corner. Or, or we have a commission that's had the same chairman four times and that same chairman has rotated through. We have some commissioners who've, who've missed fifty percent of their meetings. So I, I think we need to, to look at that and I also think that, that it would be a kind gesture and maybe even a required gesture that since the charter says with the advice and consent of the council, that we have a little more input, at least suggestion wise, as to who may or may not be on that. That's a lot of stuff. Uh, it sounds really negative. I don't mean it to be that way. I just think we ought to review the makeup, both from the segment of the population they come from and the people based upon their attendance and their longevity on the commission, because there's a lot of good folk out there that go, I, why would I even apply? I'll never get on it because there's nothing to be done.
Let, let, let me kind of, yeah, let me kind of school you on that. It's not something that we put a bunch of names there and we got a dark, we throw it in.
Why not?
Matter of fact, Cheryl and I were meeting Wednesday morning to go over that. There are a lot of factors that go into that. We try to factor in district representation. Uh, one of the things since I've been mayor, that wasn't happening before I was mayor, is we try to make sure we have some diversity on these boards and commissions. There are just a number of things and a person has to go and land and apply. They have to go and apply, so we look at applications, we look at openings. We try to figure out how do they fit into this particular board or commission that they're applying for. If there's no relevance there at all, then yeah, that's not gonna get a priority. We want somebody that's gonna be able to contribute. One of the things I'm gonna have to rely, and I've gotten feedback occasionally and I've had to respond, uh, staff that's on those boards and commissions need to notify me when we have people that have a lot of absentees. Because I will alert them, if you're no longer interested in serving on this board, then you need to consider maybe submitting a letter of resignation to me so we can put somebody on there that want to serve. So this is not something that's taken very lightly. This is something that's very serious. Cheryl and I sit down every year and go through that and we will be meeting Wednesday morning to go over the available openings and who has applied for those positions. So just kind of give you a thumbnail answer to what this process is all about.
Do the council members know?
You, you, you vote on it. That's what, that's what the charter says.
But do I know?
If you need to make a recommendation, you have somebody you're interested in, have them fill out an application. And then you send me a note and copy Cheryl on it, that this is somebody that you feel that would be good for a board or commission.
Do we know the openings, sir?
Cheryl has those openings.
Uh, may I just jump in here a minute? Cause this is getting back to a point where I, I asked Cheryl to give me a list of all the boards and commissions and a list of the absenteeisms. And I provided everybody on the council that, uh, so that we could kind of look at it and see. And I don't want to make assumptions, so I'm assuming that when you all review that, these commissions run and they have an ending date.
Right.
So if I get carried away and don't, you say, this is my privy, I don't want to talk about it. But in other words, I assume at that point you make up your mind whether you want to relist them or whether you want to get somebody new.
We would, we, yeah, we factor all that in. Is this somebody, uh, that we can reappoint? Sometimes we have to reappoint because there's nobody in the pool to replace them.
Okay, and that's kind of, I think, where Galen was going with this. Galen, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. But if we kind of knew ahead of time that, okay, there are several people on the list that I don't, that you're thinking about not replacing if we have someone to replace them with, that we could then go out and say, okay, I know some people that are interested in serving on a board that I could contact them and say, you think you need to come in, or Galen, or anybody here to contact those people and go. I know I have a couple of people in District Two that have asked me about serving, you know, on certain boards. And, you know, I don't want to tell them, well, go down and put an application in and then, you know, they get passed over, get passed over. It happens on occasion, but I mean, it would help us as a council to try to fill some of those spots with people from our district if we knew that we're gonna be some spots opening up in, in your consideration.
Well, the key to it is, is again, to be able to be considered, you need to fill out an application.
Okay.
That's the number one thing they have to do. That's the number one thing they have to do. Fill out an application and tell what areas they're interested in.
Okay.
Whether it's the planning commission, if that's the solid waste, whatever it is. Because we look at those applications.
I'd, I'd say it'd be an error for them not putting in an application. If you're interested, and there may not be any positions open, put in an application, because they're, you know, the longer you're in that pool, you know, the more likely you're gonna be to get chosen.
Well, is it, we usually do this right after the election, and I think we're running a little behind this year, aren't we?
Because of June 2nd.
Because of this. But I guess if we've got somebody that wants to be on it, we need to get on them real quick, because obviously if you guys are getting together Wednesday, it's probably gonna come forward at the first meeting in July, are you talking that quick?
Second week.
Second week, okay. Okay, so it gives us a little bit of time.
If they put in an application last year, can they go ahead and put in another one this year?
Well, they should still be in the pool, right?
We hold the applications for two years, and then we send out an email just letting them know that their application has expired, just to make sure we have all the correct interest and information.
Good.
Yeah. Like I say, it's a process that Cheryl and I go through every year in trying to make those decisions.
Well, I, I understand that, and in some aspects, as a council person, I've been lax in not maybe keeping up on that. And then by the time somebody says something, well, they've already done that, and now they have to wait a year to come back. You know, you need to get them while they're hot, so to speak, so.
Yeah. If it's somebody you personally know, and you ask them to put in an application, shoot an email to me and Cheryl, saying this is somebody that you support.
Okay. Will do, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think that answered your question, I'm sorry.
Well, I wondered if we do that. And then I, you wanted to ask a question, I wanted, was kind of curious about how you determine, or if you determine how many absences one ought to have to be considered, and maybe we ought to replace you.
Well, you know, again, I have relied upon the committee department head to notify me and Cheryl if, if, if you have some people that's not showing up for meetings. And then what I do is I normally will reach out to them and to try to figure out why. I don't want to make any assumptions, sometimes it could be a health issue, it could be some issues that I don't want to make assumptions on.
Right.
So I've reached out to people and notified them, I've noticed that you've had a number of absences, and is there a problem? Are you no longer interested in serving? And sometimes I've had it, no, I'm interested, I've had some health issues. Well, I excuse those health issues, especially if it doesn't become a problem with meat and a corn. So, I mean, you just have to use them, because my mother would say some mother wet on a lot of this stuff.
And I, and I give them the benefit of the doubt, I mean, I, I don't expect them to have attendance like I would a city council member, because it's the volunteer commission, and, you know, they, they've got some things that they legitimately need to take care of, so. You know, I'm not saying 50% is any good, but I'm just saying that
Yeah.
the expectations are not as high for me.
Yeah, we try to be reasonable like that when we deal with people.
Susan?
Okay. My, my position really, or questions really don't have to do so much with attendance, because I think that's a, kind of a black and white issue, you know, you're here, you're not here. My problem is, is I look at these boards and commissions, and I printed out the description on the website, and I looked at the ordinances, and we are not consistent. Some, the chairs are appointed, some of the chairs are elected. We have city councilmen who are liaisons, and, but yet we have one commission, I believe only one, there may be a second, where the, not only is there a voting councilman, but there are two councilmen who are voting. So, I, it's, to me, it, some of those commissions are lopsided. I think that we need to look at them again, and I think we need to look at the purpose, and we need to look at, what is the actual reason for this, the existence? Which way are they going? We've got one commission right now that as far as I'm concerned is running amok, and getting, it could get us in hot water if we're not careful. And I think it's just because they don't, they don't know what they're doing, they don't have guidance. And I know when, when I was sitting on the planning commission a couple of years ago, I asked, and Jackie was gracious enough to do a training program, because those, it had been way too long, and they lost sight of what they should and shouldn't, and could and could not be doing, and what their authorities were. So I think we need to sit back, and we need to look at every one of these commissions, and we need to say, what is your purpose, where are you heading, how do you plan, just kind of a down and dirty business plan for every one of them? Because I don't think they really, and I'm talking in generalities, they're not all this way. I, I think that we need to better establish what we want these commissions to accomplish. And I think it's a problem, I think it's a big problem. Another issue that I have, and this is a very specific issue, we have a description on the website for if a person wants to be on the safety board. We have another description which fairly well matches it in the ordinance. And yet, when I put someone's name in for, for this position on the safety board, I was told, no, they have to have gone through the Citizens Police Academy. That's not anywhere, that is not written anywhere in anything that I've seen, and I've dug through this twice now trying to find it. I have a person who lives in my district that was really interested. Comes from a family of cops, he wanted to get involved in the city, and he actually is a, well, he, he has a very responsible job handling budgets. And so he knows budgeting, he knows how to, how to work those things. And then I'm told, well, no, we can't put his name in there because he hasn't gone through the Citizens Police Academy. Not everybody who goes through the Citizens Police Academy is qualified to handle the safety sales tax issues. So I, I, we just, we have no consistency, everything isn't in black and white where to me it should be. There shouldn't be any second guessing. We should be able to look at the ordinance, look at the description on the website, and say, here are the qualifications. If you meet those qualifications, then we will put your name in that pool.
Well, let me explain that to you, that's my rule, as far as the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board.
But it's nowhere.
It doesn't have to be anywhere. That's my discretion as the mayor on who I want to appoint. I want somebody that has actually gone through the Citizen Police Academy, or has some experience in law enforcement.
Then we ought to put it in there. Because when you put this out, this is what people look at. I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm just, I find this to be a problem.
We will put it in there, but I want people that has actually gone through there, and that's been my rule the whole time, since we have gone to the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board. And we have a whole list of people, and I don't know what the pool looks like right now, Cheryl, of people that has gone through that academy that want to serve.
That's not my point. My point is, it's not consistent, it's not in writing.
What you're saying is not in ordinance.
It's not in, it's not in writing anywhere, so when someone comes to, goes to our website, and they say, oh, I think I would be interested in Commission A, they go to Commission A, and they look at all those requirements, and they say, boy, this is right up my alley, this is what I'm good at, this is what I do in my career, this is what my education is in, whatever it is. And then they turn it in, and they're told, oh, well, no, you can't do that, because there's this other qualification.
I take responsibility for that, because that's the rule that I put in place.
Well, we need to put it in writing.
And making my appointments.
It's gotta be, we need to be, we need to make sure that the rules are stated, whatever they're gonna be.
We can take a look if we want to put that in there or not, but those are the rules I'm gonna follow, and I'm gonna continue to follow.
I'm just saying, you can't go to the website and see if you qualify or not.
I'm not sure about the website and all that, but uh...
Well, it's the ordinances.
It's, it's not in the, it's not in writing anyplace.
Yeah.
Yeah, I never, every decision I make's not gonna necessarily be in a writing, but it'll be somewhere. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't agree with that in so much as when somebody is interested in a commission, I think we need to give them the benefit of the doubt and let them know what the qualifications are.
I hear you.
So, your honor, I, I opened this because nobody was saying anything, so I just kind of ramble. But I would like to say this, there are some people on commissions who attend very well, some of them, and miss almost all the others. So there's no illness issue there. The other thing is, and I'm gonna say it out loud, guys...
Explain that to me one more time.
Okay, we have, let's say we have a downtown advisory board, and we have a planning commission member.
Right.
Downtown advisory board goes...
Serve on the same boards that are both...
Same name, same name goes to one, same name goes to almost all of them of the other one.
Are you talking to representative from the planning commission that serves on one of these other ones, because you have a planning commission?
No, it's not the representative, it's, I'm, I'm saying there are people, and I'm not gonna name the names, but it's on this chart, who go very religiously to planning commission and don't go to downtown review.
But they're assigned to both boards?
That's correct. So there are issues when, I'm not talking about illnesses, I get that. I, I mean, if you miss nine meetings out of nine because you're sick, that's, that's terrible. But then the other thing is, I'm gonna say it real clear, we don't attend these meetings, guys. We've got people that are representatives here to some commissions that vote on commissions that are only there 50% of the time, on this board. And that's not right.
Which is Chris and I, and you're talking about the downtown review.
I said I wasn't gonna name names.
Well, no, but you're, you're pointing fingers, and we might as well let us know who it is, because we both know who we are, who's doing that.
And that, and that goes to point of the representation, but that's, that's, that's an issue. I personally believe that the downtown board ought to ask, if we're gonna have council members that vote, it ought to be council members from other, or at least one from another section. We also have, there's another, there's another council member that's only gone to one meeting, and I don't know whether the meetings are even worth going to. But, but it doesn't look very good on here if we're not gonna be there, it just doesn't.
Now, let, let me ask this question, because typically in the past, with tradition, with some of the downtown organizations, I've tried to send District 2 council, assign District 2 council members to. Now, if that doesn't work out for you guys, that you would want to give it up, and some other council members want to serve there, let me know.
Your honor?
Yes.
I don't want it.
Okay.
Could you clear that up a little bit?
I'm not with you, Jerry.
I think you got your hands full right now anyway, Mr. Pro Tem.
Yes, sir.
My goal wasn't to name names, my goal was to make the point that we need to be, do the same job that we expect others to do. I, I just, I think we do.
And I think if liaisons are not voting, they're not voting. We can't have some committees where they vote and some where they don't vote.
There are some things in, in my discussion, like, we, we changed it to where the mayor has a chance to appoint the chair and the vice chair, and, and we do that based on people's ability, because sometimes just because you're on the commission and you got seniority, doesn't mean you can run a board.
That's my point on this other one, yeah, yeah.
So we took a look at that, and on some of them, I don't have that authority, it's done by state statute, that where they select their own. Which was a shock.
Can we put a note on that, though, so that we know which ones are that way?
Right, mm-hmm, yeah, we can identify which ones, the where they have to choose.
Because that would make it easier.
Right, which they choose their own, and I don't have the option of choosing the chair and the vice chair.
She, you mentioned liaison voting and council members, or liaisons not voting, and then we went to chairman, but you, you were making a point, I think, weren't you, that liaison, some of them, some commissions they vote.
Some do and some don't vote.
And they don't.
Some, some, some of them, the liaison vote on, some of them, they don't vote on.
Is that state statute?
Jackie, is that state statute? I guess you need to talk about specific ones?
No, what, what about the liaison voting? Well, the liaison doesn't vote on planning, it never has, on planning commission. But I know there are some committees where they do, and so I'm curious why we have some are, some are and some aren't. We need to be consistent. I have a problem with the fact that if you have somebody, I don't care what, what committee it is, but if you have someone on council who is voting on a, at a committee level, and then they turn around and they vote again at the council level, I'm not sure that that's, what's the word I'm looking for?
We know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
She brought that up.
Yeah, and again, we talked about that, and we looked at some of those things, and...
May I ask Jackie a question?
Yeah.
But Jackie, I guess this is a question, it's kind of a statement, but I ask you about that, because I, I don't like that. And I believe we talked about that in some state, or some cities, that the planning commission liaison is a voting member, and all of the, so the question I think was, is it state statute that requires some boards and commissions to have voting council members and non-voting council members? And my understanding from my discussion with you was, no, there is not a statute to that effect.
It is not. I did some research on it, checked with, I mean, both Cheryl and I checked with the Missouri Ethics Commission, and they found no legal issue with, for instance, a council member sitting,
Right.
you know, being a liaison and, and hearing things at the planning mission level, and then voting on it.
And then if...
And they also said in many cities, council members are voting members of the planning mission.
If I'm not mistaken, I think when the, the, because I went to the meeting in December, I believe it was, or maybe November of 2018, when the Charter Commission presented the charter to the council, and one of the, one of the recommendations was, it wasn't in the charter, but one of the recommendations made at that meeting was to have all of the, all of the, the commissions or boards that, that council members are on, all be voting members. Instead like DAC, you're not, but you are on downtown, you're not on planning commission, but whatever, that was a recommendation. And I, I didn't go back and look at all the meetings, but I went to all of them. I, I don't recall that discussion ever going past the recommendation when he stood up and made that recommendation to the council. And I believe it was December 18 of, or something like that, of 2018. So that was, that was a recommendation made by a board that was commissioned to work on the charter, that everybody voted, on all, all the council members would vote on all the boards and commissions that they were on. So that's another part of the boards and commissions thing.
So I can, I just wonder about the person, if you say, we're gonna have council members vote, and you put them on the planning commission, well, if they're gonna vote, they ought to be part of the, part of the discussion, the debate. Well, and are we gonna get ourselves in a situation where somebody has committed to voting or said something as a council member at that level, and then they gotta come back and hear public testimony later on, so I, I would...
Yeah, I mean, I raised that issue myself, and that was when I went, I asked a question on City Attorney Listerv, and then we talked to the Missouri Ethics Commission, I went to a seminar and asked that question. No one else seemed to think there was an issue with that.
I, I want to be real clear, and then I'll, then I'll shut up. I don't like the idea that we vote on boards and commissions. I was objecting to that, I still object to it, but I think if we're gonna have council members vote on one commission or board, they ought to, we ought to vote on all of them, or not vote on all of them. And I would say not vote on all of them would be my preference.
Well, let me ask Jackie, because I agree with you. I, I don't think we should, I don't think we should be voting at that level and then come and vote as a council member. Can we establish by ordinance, saying that no council member as a liaison to any board or commission can vote as a non-voting member?
I think we could. We did a revision of the boards and commissions last year, and looked at each one.
It says that on a couple of the, in a couple of the ordinances, it does say non-voting. But not all, we're not consistent.
So I guess what we need to do is maybe Jackie just take a look and see how can we go about making that happen? To say that all council members serves as liaison or non-voting members of any board or commission they serve on? Is that...
I agree.
...about is...
Oh, I, I would, I...
I, I don't necessarily agree, I will disagree, and probably not support that ordinance altogether. I think there are, the, the, what's getting lost in this conversation is not every board is the same. Some boards have oversight over public dollars, some boards are purely informational, some propose policy, some don't have anything to do with the city, they're kind of their own thing, like the ARC Commission.
The CIP Commission, Capital Improvement, you would say that council members vote on that one?
Yeah, and, and I think the, and I'm, the only one I'm aware of that, that the council votes on, the liaison... Yeah, and, and I think the, and I'm, the only one I'm aware of, that, that the council votes on, the liaison, is the downtown review board. I don't think any other commission they vote on, besides CIP and CDBG and those special committees. But the-
Shaking her head.
Historic preservation as well.
Okay, so, which is kind of, again, it's those downtown related, uh, um, ones, so, and, and I agree, I don't think it's a problem, because there's information that changes from the planning commission meeting to the council meeting a week later, and there's different public testimony, and there's different information presented, because something comes up at the committee level that then the applicant either changes something, or they respond to that feedback. And that's what those committees are for, those committees are to vet policy, to vet ideas, and to vet applications, and then, by the time they get here, we have a whole package. So, the whole point of a council person to be on those committees is to express information from the council perspective, and then to report back from the committee, and I think you did a good job of that when you were, when you were, uh, the Pro Tem, is saying, this is what happened at this meeting, I'm reporting back as a liaison, and that's what those are for. But there are some boards, like the downtown review board, where there is actually policy being set, like codes, for example. The downtown review board reviews downtown codes that should have a council voice in the vote before it gets to this point. Now, I think we now have a appeal process that we didn't have before, but that's why that vote was there, was, it was the, it was the final arbiter of that decision, and so you needed council votes there. The Art Commission isn't the same way, they, they don't even really recommend, uh, recommend policy to the city. And so, not every board is created equal, and they can't all be treated the same way. I understand the consistency in the messaging, I think is what your biggest problem was, was we need to at least know what we're, what we're talking about. But I don't think they need all be treated the same, and I don't think there's as big as concern over that pre-voting as it's being made out to be. Because there's a lot of new information that comes from one meeting to another. Even if I vote yes at the downtown review board, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna vote yes at the next one, because new information may come that changes my mind, or something I didn't think about. And so, I don't think that's as big as a concern as it's, as it's being considered.
And, and Mayor, if, if it would help solve some of these issues, I would gladly give up the seat to let you sit in on the downtown review for a year and see how it goes, and, and understand what that commission actually does. If you're so inclined.
I, I didn't bring it up for me to do that, but I've said all along, and you and I talked about this-
Yes, we did.
Privately between the two, I'd said I would be happy to do that, and put my mouth where my sitting is, or something like that.
You got it. If that's all right with, again, if that's all right with-
Well, I tell Sheriff to duly note that.
I'll, I'll make a note.
I've got one more quick comment. Al- also to do with the attendance for council meetings, and I know, I know you're calling me out on that most of all, which is fine.
You didn't wanna do that.
But, no, 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 and that's fine, because what, what I think gets, again, missed in this conversation is, we have lots of meetings, some of which we don't have any control over what gets scheduled. For example, the reason why Kent and I have missed the downtown review board a couple of times, because it's been scheduled at the same time as our two-on-two with, with administration. And so, what I think the approach, at least him and I have taken, is, we don't want our schedule to dictate the other eight members of that community board who are volunteering their time. If we have a conflicting meeting, we're not gonna say, hey, you need to change that meeting because I've gotta be somewhere else. We're not that important to the operations of that committee. So, we've said, you guys go ahead, if we can make it, we will, if we can show up after, we will. So, we've let their meeting continue, even though we have a conflict, because we haven't felt like we were all that important to change-
And some of those meetings, that does come back before, so they had a later point.
Yeah, and we'll see the same information anyway. So, that's why a lot of those absences from the council liaison is just because we have a conflicting meeting, and we didn't think it was appropriate to change their schedule because of that.
We wanna make sure we give Jackie some clear instructions on what to do. Is, is, if, if you all feel strongly enough that on some of them, it's necessary for, at least we could put in a document that's plain that council liaisons don't vote on issues except for these. Does that work?
Look, you know, your honor, when we talk, and it's been brought up, well, the downtown review board is making final decisions. Um, now, your, your safety board, they're dealing with city tax money. So, um, I, I don't necessarily agree with that kind of an analogy. Um, a liaison, the purpose of a liaison is to be there for discussion, not to be there to, um, dictate, not to be there to be a voting member. They are there to be part of the discussion and, um, to report back to this council what they have heard and what the discussion was about, and to make sure that the council, you know, you read the minutes, but you can't really glean everything from the minutes. Um, and I think that that's the, the reason to have liaisons. So, um, and as far as downtown review, and boy, I'm gonna get in trouble for this since I'm on the downtown board, but, um, we have, everybody who's on that commission is on the board for downtown alive, or, um, has a shop downtown, and yet we turn around and we say, wow, we're not, you know, we're not being inclusive, well, because we're not opening it up to anybody except this concentrated little group. So, you have somebody who lives up north or down south, and they're interested in downtown and what's going on downtown, and they have no say in what happens to their downtown. So, I'm not so sure that that is structured the way we really would like it to be, to make sure that our downtown grows. When you make it inclusive, you are, you are ruling out the possibilities of new ideas and new blood and expansion. So, um, again, this is why I would like to sit down and go through these boards and commissions. I think it's very important to do that.
But why don't we, why don't we take a look at that, and maybe just kind of appoint a, a task force, or a, may I, for lack of a better word, to take a look at that?
So, your honor?
Mhm.
I, I, I got confused here. Uh, so, is my colleague on the other side of the bench over here, is she a voting member of the downtown alive?
No, I do not vote on the downtown live board. I'm a member of the board, but I am not a non-voting member for downtown alive.
Okay, I didn't know, I was just asking.
And she's not, and she's not the liaison either from the council?
Yeah, I'm not, there is no liaison for down, on the downtown alive.
Sorry, two different, downtown alive and downtown review board are two different entities.
Right, two different things.
Okay, so are you a member of the downtown review board then, too?
No, sir.
Okay.
This may be a good thing to roll into our strategic plan conversation, too.
Yeah.
Since it's coming up.
Good idea. We can roll that in there, relevant task force, just kind of roll it into our strategic plan.
Do you need, do you need a motion?
No, Eric, Eric's taking notes.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just point out that liaisons do not vote-
Right.
Uh, you know, on any of the boards or commissions. But there are certain boards and commissions where council members are voting members. So, are those the ones that you're particularly concerned about?
I, I'm concerned about them all.
Okay.
I think we need to, now, uh, this is me speaking here, um, but I think we need to look at every one of our boards and commissions. Um, I think that, um, not only for this issue, but make sure that they're steering themselves in the right direction, make sure that we, we, these are, these boards are actually doing what is intended for them to do. You know, what's your purpose, what's your, you know, like I said, kind of a, um, a little, a little business plan kind of arrangement, you know? What's your purpose, and where are you going, and how do you plan on getting there? And I think that some of our boards and commissions have lost sight of that.
I, I think I hear what Jackie's saying is, if it's in a liaison position, it's not a voting member. There are some boards where the council member is a member of that board also.
Yeah, I got that, I got that.
And so-
Yeah, but-
I still think there's reasons to treat them differently, is what I'm saying. So, there are reasons for a council member, and I think downtown review board historically been that, because we represent the interests of downtown, and that's why district two has historically been the members of that board.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, that's being, that's being exclusive.
So, would you agree that CIP and CDBG have voting members from the council?
Those aren't commissions, are they?
Well, they're not led, they're not liaison positions.
They're not liaison positions.
You're not, you're representing the city.
Yeah.
But, but if you're gonna be the downtown review board member from the council, then I'm sending you the phone calls that I get from downtown business members. Because I can't affect change- I can't affect change as a member of that board.
You, you assign people to the CDBG, right? So, it's, it's a committee, yeah?
Yeah.
And there's normally three members of council on there?
Right.
So-
Yeah, one from each district.
And, and we all vote, itself included, but then there's development advisory, and I'm a liaison, and that, from time to time, as you know, I talk too much, and I've been told, hey, you, 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 you know, you're just a liaison, stay over here in the corner. And they're not, I would love to have been a voting member of that one time, because we didn't have enough people on the committee to even show up. But, that's not the point, that there, there is inconsistency, and, and, I don't know, I'm, I, I, I think we all ought to vote or not vote.
I imagine that, they wanted you to shut up.
They did, can't imagine that. Was that a hint, sir?
I don't, I don't know if it'll ever get absolute with no voting, because like I said, the CDBG, the CIP, I think that we do gotta give input at that level.
Yeah.
Yeah, those three, that we alternate every year.
Yeah.
Then the recommendation was, back in that December, that they all, all of us vote on all our committees and all of the commissions we're on. That was the recommendation.
Which, which wasn't adopted. Okay, let's move on, guys, the conditional use permit, what's, what we talking about on that one? Where are we? Condition number, number eight, conditions used-
I know that they don't come to the city council anymore, and, and the question is, should they come to the city council pass? Or just, do we let the planning commission handle them all?
You know, we, we've had, we've had at least one issue that I know, uh, because I think there is a process to where any council member can request, appeal it, to come before us. So, there's a mechanism, and I think Susan, you're the one that did that, you appealed it, and it had to come to us.
The, the, the problem with appeal, help me, Jackie, is if I don't like a conditional use permit, and then it's appealed to me, and there's, let's say there's a, the, the council, the planning commission votes on a rezoning and a conditional use permit, and they vote it in. And then, we bring it to the council, and the council's going, wait a minute, now, now we have a rezoning, so we're voting on that, but that, that rezoning already has a conditional use permit attached to it. So, if I wanna appeal the conditional use permit, because I don't like that, because it affects my decision on the rezoning, I'm not sure what the correct adverbage it is, but I think I could be in trouble, legal trouble, by appealing that decision, and I don't wanna have to appeal a decision of a, of a conditional use permit, I'd much rather be able to vote on it. Because appealing it sets you up for failure when somebody goes, oh, now that's gonna affect your vote on the other stuff. I don't wanna do that.
Okay, so the, so, this was put on the agenda to discuss whether we, as a group of people, want to not allow the planning commission to be able to have final approval on conditional use permits, that all of them will come before the city council.
They could review.
Based on their recommendations.
Based upon their recommendation and review, that's absolutely correct, that's why it's there.
Okay, is that kind of the sentiment of everybody?
I, I certainly don't mind hearing them all.
Okay.
I, I, because I think there's gonna be situations where I would like to have them brought forward, but boy, some developers out there are saying, wait a minute, the planning commission approved it, I'm gonna go start spending my money, and you guys are in a lawsuit, because I, you know, I, I have no idea whether you're gonna do that or not.
See, that's the problem.
Yeah.
We did the same thing with the preliminary plat, and we changed that for that very reason.
Yeah.
Because the planning commission would approve preliminary plat, but the rezoning hadn't come before council yet, and so now we're out there, and we've got a developer who's spending millions of dollars putting in infrastructure, and we haven't rezoned it yet. Um, you know, that, that opens up a really big can of worms for us.
Okay, so it sounds like the preference is, is the conditional use permits not to be final approval by the planning commission, that all those will, they recommend and it will come to the city council. Okay. Mike's nodding his head over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something that, that staff could bring forward, that, that would require a change to the unified development code and, and go through that process. A little bit of history on that, um, the conditional use permits started in nineteen seventy-two, and those were just planning commission approvals. And then in nineteen eighty-one, the code was changed to have those all recommended by the planning commission, and then final approval was with the Board of Aldermen. And that continued until nineteen ninety-six, in which it was changed back to the way it is today. So, um, I do, and doing the research on that, I did see quite a few conditional use permits in the early nineties. So, um, I'm trying to find any documentation as to the reasons why it changed back. Um, I could guess that it was just the sheer number of them, and it was taking up a lot of council time, but that would just be a sheer guess. But, um, there's precedent over the history of the city since those conditional use permits were introduced in nineteen seventy-two, to have it be both ways, actually.
Okay. Let's move on to the last item, economic development update. Eric, that's you, right?
That would be me, sir, good, my timing here is perfect, yes. Um, I'm gonna try to frame this as positively as I can. Um, in the midst of all the very serious, uh, important issues that we're dealing with tonight, um, despite some businesses that we know of in our community that have closed and will remain closed, there, uh, there is economic development activity occurring in the city. And since the middle part of January, you know, we've been without an economic development director. And I know that that topic is gonna come up tonight. And, um, Christine and I have been tag teaming, uh, we've been keeping the shop open, uh, with the assistance from the planning department, with Mike and Matt and his team. We have been, um, continuing to, um, provide opportunities for people who want to invest in our community, to invest and to help them through the process. We are currently, um, dealing with, uh, existing businesses who want to relocate um, from one location to another, and we're trying to help them through any rezoning issues that may be out there. But, um, these numbers, I know we share these reports with you, but, um, and I know we started this meeting today talking about a budget update and about how we're being conservative, and so, um, on one hand, we're being conservative, on the other hand, I wanna give you encouraging news that businesses and investors continue to look at Blue Springs, uh, for opportunities. And in the last year, we've had over forty-four point seven million dollars of new investment in Blue Springs. Um, the, the last three years, I'll say three plus years, it's been very encouraging. And I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tick it off here quickly. If I can read this, this mask makes my glasses fog up, and I can't, I can't see, and if I take my glasses off, I can't see.
Put hand sanitizer on your glasses, it'll de-fog them, it truly will.
Really?
Yeah, it works real well. I used to do it in surgery.
That, that- Good to know, that's probably the best piece of information we've had all night.
That's probably the smartest thing I've said in a week. Don't you dare say that.
Uh, Novel Place, uh, is being built now at Price Chopper, if you drive by there. I think it's gonna be really, it looks great. Uh, they are scheduled to open in October, and that is a fourteen point two million dollar investment. Calamar Senior Living is being built now, uh, they haven't started vertical construction yet, but the groundwork is occurring. This is the one that is to the immediate east of Adams Point Golf Course, ten point eight million. We got a lot, lot of storage property going up in Blue Springs. And, uh, we've got, uh, the Store Trappola's six point three million, Verdad, five point one, Casey Bobcat, uh, beautiful new facility on Forty Highway, two point four million. Blue Springs Marine had a huge expansion, and looks great, uh, one point five million, uh, Dental Depot, okay, I know it's, it's a favorite. One point three million. Uh, Title Wave is going on right now, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars investment, there's a new Burger King going on on Woods Chapel. Chris and Kent were still working for that grocery store, we always are, it's always on our, the top of our list when we're thinking about district two. Discover Vision, um, which was there at Artimize and Seven Highway, uh, beautiful new facility, that was a nine hundred thousand dollar investment. So, forty-four point seven million and change in new investment in our community over the last year. And, um, what you're not aware of is, is that, because it's, it's new. Is that we are meeting with. A company, a developer and investors who are looking to build almost six hundred thousand, six, let me say that again. Six hundred thousand square feet of new. Distribution center that is immediately east of Forsia. It's all the way over on the far eastern side of the city. And we, last week, Chris, Sandy, Mike and Matt from planning met with the team. And it's, it's not public information yet, but they have the land under control. And they have investors who are ready to spend money in our community. And so we are working on putting that deal together. And so, very, very exciting. So the point of my, and I will, I will share this, this update with the, the EDC. Because we haven't had any meetings with the EDC since January. And I know Ms. Becky Nace has been very patient with me. And is, and that entire group deserves an update. But we do have some. We do have some exciting things going on in our, in our city and I didn't mention the residential. You know, the residential, you know, is, is, continues to be very strong. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't want any questions.
Yep, well, coming down from six hundred thousand square feet, this is not gonna sound like much, but the. There was a deal in the notes the other day, I know, you mentioned senior living, okay? But there was something that came down about Meadow Ridge Apartments and just to the east of there and there's a strip center. But there's a little sliver of land in between there and it was for some subsidized senior living. You know, looking at that piece of ground, I can't see anything else going in there but something like that. Because it's just never developed all these years, nobody's gonna build single family housing in there.
Where is it?
And Meadow, you know where Meadow Ridge Apartments is at?
I didn't hear that, yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah, and then, and then that business strip, because you used to be involved by the business strip, I think. But there's, in, in that, that'd be great to see that area filled up with that senior living you guys mentioned, so.
Wasn't, as I recall, back when. Those apartments that are there now, they were originally HUD as I recall. And then they converted. I don't think they're HUD now, are they? Or are they?
I don't know, I don't know.
I thought they dressed all that up, but yeah, I thought they were still subsidized. But I may be wrong.
That District Two, it's a District Three, isn't it?
Exactly, it's Three, yeah. But, yeah, if that, if that area could be filled up with some senior living, that'd be great.
So Councilmember Fowler, you're, you're right, there have been many people who have looked at that strip of land there off of Clark. And so I think, seems like the, the group that's looking at it right now has some traction and, and probably would be a very good project for that area.
If, if I may, Your Honor, sorry, the need just in front of you. The recent project that, at Winstead's that, that you informed us Mike about. And the. Added burden that the state is putting on that. I, I just wish there was some way we could help offset that somehow to where that makes that a, a, a good project to go in. Because in my opinion, that's our future white oak right there. With Denny's down and that, the gas station, it just, that whole area is gonna decline and bring, bring right there. I seventy prime, I seventy and Seven Highway location and it's gonna be, you know, I wanna say a ghetto, but. It's, it's really seemed to fight itself and, and I feel, and I don't know how long that restriction's been on there, but. Maybe that's why that hasn't done anything is the state's throwing those, that burden on those developers. And therefore it doesn't make it profitable, it doesn't make it work. So there ought to be some way we can come back and fight that or at least say, you know. Why should they have to pay the burden of that, the state should cover that when there, it's their highway, you know, we can't. You know, we all the time get beat up about the median's being deteriorated, the potholes on that stuff and it's state. But yet when we want to try to bring in some development that would benefit our community, the state comes in and says, well, they need to do this and they need to do that. No, you need to do that, that's your highway, not, not that person that's trying to move into this community and, and benefit this community. So that's my rant, sorry, my soapbox, I apologize.
We have spent money on, on roads that are not ours before with, remember up at Woods Chapel and I seventy? That was a federal highway and, and entrance rammer, but we, we invested quite a bit into it, so.
Thirteen million.
Yeah, I, I guess we could, you know, help out, in my opinion, we could help out from our Seven Highway from that perspective.
Then I think maybe we should help out as far as a city to do that and not put it on the burden of a developer that's wanting to come in and take a piece of blighted property. And make it something besides a dumping ground for old sofas and couches and rugs. Sorry, you got me on soapbox.
You're right, you're right, absolutely.
My turn?
Your turn.
Is it the reason that we lost out on the project before in the Winstead's was because of the state. Requiring the median to be put in in Mach?
For the most part, that was the feedback we got when they chose to not.
I wish, I kinda wish we would have known that a little, after that had been done, to try to help raise something up to, to try to cure. To deter anything like that happening and losing out on a project. Because if we'd have known, I, I think the council would agree that here's another item that I'm, I'm looking at that. Again, I, I read on Facebook and everything else and I don't hear, hear. And I think if we'd have been told this, we could have probably come up with some solution like my colleague Councilman Fowler saying. That, to help lure a business in here, but if we don't know. That they were turned down because the state of Missouri jacked with us, then, you know, it's kinda hard for the people up here to, to help out.
So is that MODOT, is that MODOT restrictions?
It's a combination of MODOT and city. As you well know, in the citizen survey, one of the big things that's on the list is congestion on Seven Highway. And so as with when Andys came in and built their facility, we asked that they extend the island down to. Cut down on the number of left turns across and stacking problems. Followed suit with this, that the next development would extend the island down to Mach South Outer Intersection. And then we'd also ask for some pedestrian movement help across the highway from east to west. So it's a conjunction between, or a cooperative effort between the city and MODOT trying to increase the. Decrease congestion, it's access control. It's not a terribly expensive project other than they will need to relocate the mast arm on the northwest corner. To set it back to make the radius for the intersection applicable. I think the other problem is, is that when you install the island. You then take away the left turn capability for northbound traffic. And I don't know that that wasn't actually more of the issue that set the other project on hold.
For northbound or southbound traffic?
For northbound traffic, southbound would be turning into McDonald's.
So northbound, turning left or turning west?
Yes, so for the new business to go up turn. And go west into the parking lot.
But the northbound traffic has the stoplight, right?
The northbound traffic can take a left at the stoplight and come in off of Mach Avenue. However, there are still many people that try to make that left-hand movement at the end of the island that was installed by Andys. And if you look at the crash history, there are numerous accidents in the area.
That's one area, I don't, I don't like medians, but I almost say that going down to Mach is the thing to do because it's, I just see too much risk there. There's a lot of accidents that don't happen that are very close to happening.
And although that's, it's a really great intersection because there's a lot of traffic that traverses through there, so it's. It's very advantageous for a business. It also needs a little bit of cleanup to make things safer and allow traffic to move more smoothly.
Your Honor. How, how much, how much money are we talking about?
The signal is probably sixty thousand dollars to move that pole. And the island is probably another twenty and a little bit of pavement stripings. So I, I'll say round numbers, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So a hundred and twenty-five thousand is what stopped that from development from coming in?
As I say, I don't know this, all the money. Part of it is the availability for customers to be able to get into the lot if they're northbound. Because once they pass the intersection, then they're headed to the highway or up the Shaw Parkway to turn around and come back to it.
Yeah, another factor in that, why they, why they moved on and, and a lot of times we, when we have these pre-application meetings with developers, we. We outline all the regulations and all the improvements that are required and sometimes we never hear back from them. The only time we hear from them is when we see that they've opened a new location in near proximity, we never hear back from them. So we never get to have that back and forth discussion. But in, in following back up with them, which I did earlier this year, to help them look at other sites in the city. Because we do have a number of vacant restaurant sites, they cited not only the public infrastructure cost, but also the cost of the land. And how much actual space they were gonna need for that business. And then that left some additional land to the north in between the old Winstead's restaurant and then the gas station. And they were just, you know, trying to find something to be able to do with that land that they didn't need and so. It was, it was a factor of the public improvement costs, the, the turning movements, but also the cost of the underlying land, which the city really has no control over whatsoever.
Honor.
Yes.
On that, on that note, but. Help me, if, if I'm right or wrong here, this is what I've heard, but if one doesn't tear the building down. Then they don't have to do the, the median, is that correct?
Not necessarily, it depends on if they have enough of a change of use that requires a traffic study. And the traffic study will probably come back and say that those changes are required. That's where we run into the problem.
Because my understanding, if the building stayed and they remodeled the shell there, the building. There was no reason to, they wasn't requesting to finish the.
It depends on the full project and what, if it, if it's gonna be another hamburger stand, basically exactly what was there, no, there wouldn't be. But if you've got a change of use, if they're gonna expand the building, if they're gonna change their entryways in any way. Then we get back to the idea of we need to have a traffic study to show how it's gonna affect the intersection and the area around it. So if you wanted to open Jerry's Hamburgers, as it stands.
And they would be good.
I'm sure they would, because you're a hamburger connoisseur as I am. We wouldn't need to do a traffic study. But they, when the other company was looking at the Winstead's building, they were also proposing to install something on the north side of the lot, like an ATM. Or a smoothie company. Which was gonna add more traffic to the site.
Okay.
And that required a traffic study.
Okay.
Anybody else?
But Chris, you're.
I want, I want to bring us back to what Eric said and I think it addresses Councilman Kayler's concerns too. Is the, the idea of an economic development staff person. And I think that solves a lot of these problems because what, what Mike goes into these meetings saying, these are what the rules are. And what Eric can present to that is, well, I know what the council might be willing to negotiate on, that's not really Mike's job to do. We need a staff person whose job it is to navigate the waters between what the council wants and what staff says is required. And we, we do need an economic development staff person, so then Eric and Christine aren't trying to do this in addition to all their other duties. And so I think that's something I think we need to be doing in this next budget, I think we need to be doing pretty soon. I don't know how much is still available from our last person leaving, because I know that was kind of a joint position, but. I think that does what Councilman Kayler wants and that we get some of those notifications ahead of time. I think that helps present the council perspective to what we might be willing to negotiate. Because the codes and the requirements are purely at our disposal, if we don't want a traffic study to be required, we can just say we don't want a traffic study to be required. So I think that prevents a lot of these problems and I, I think it's something we need to be doing.
Where are we with the, with this, I know we're trying to do the HR. So what is the status, I, I know I ask you this once a week, but.
So we have put the recruitment of this position on hold, on, on purpose. Because, for a couple of reasons, one, you. When, when we had the transition occur in mid-January. As you all, as you all know, you've been through these businesses, sometimes you learn things about your organization. When you go through a transition or you have a moment when you have a vacancy. We've learned a lot about COVID nineteen and about what that means to our organizations. We also know that we've had to be very conservative about our budget because we weren't certain what was gonna happen with our budget. And so I don't wanna, I don't want to hire somebody. And then when I'm telling every other department in my organization to keep positions frozen. Through attrition, we're not doing that with public safety, but we're doing that in other positions. So we've, we've had this on hold. We, we know it's a priority and so we're gonna begin the process of recruiting for that. The HR director position, Sue's gonna be retiring in August. You've seen the brochure that Christine sent to everyone, that's gonna be happening. And we honestly wanted to get feedback from the council tonight. As to the level of priority with regard to this economic development position because. If it, if it's a priority for you, then it's a priority for us and we will move ahead as quickly as possible.
Your Honor.
Yes.
There is no question in my mind that having someone who has the expertise to bring business into this community, it's. It's like, it's that, what is that adage, it takes money to make money kinda thing. We need someone out there, you guys have your plates full, there is no way that you can continue doing all that you're doing. And take on the task of bringing in new business. But it has to happen because that's the only way we're gonna increase our tax base. And so from this councilman's perspective, that is top priority for me.
I would like to thank all of you for saying everything I wanted to say. And I know you, you appreciate that as well. Eric, I, I think you guys are understaffed and I've told you that personally. And I think you should hire yesterday whoever, whomever you need because you can't run a veterinary office without a veterinarian. You can't run a city without an economic development director. And the other thing is I hear a little bit tonight, like, let's make some compromise so we can get something, like let's don't do a traffic study. I think our goal ought to be how to do, how to make it happen, but do it right. Two council meetings ago or whatever, I was a sole dissenter on a tax thing, a three fifty-three or whatever that awful number is. So we do that and, and then, and then we, we got this place out here and you said it blighted, I haven't really looked at it like the next white oak. That's an incredible way of looking at it and that corner's horrible, we ought to be fixing that corner, you can't turn a pickup truck on that corner. Jerry has to go around the other way to turn his truck going out on Mach. Yeah, you just go over the, yeah, you're the one that needs, that wrecks all the signs, I get it. So I think we need to hire people, I agree with that, it's an absolute priority. And whatever we do, we need to do, we need to figure out how to do it, but do it right and not make a compromise on it. Because we will regret the compromise, we just will. That's it.
You sure?
That's it, I'm done.
If, if I may, I will, one more point, Ron, you want to jump in here?
Well, I was gonna say, how can, how can one district have two white oaks? How can you guys do that?
But we keep fixing them though, you guys keep giving them to us and we keep fixing them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my, my point would be if, if, if it's that little of a money. I mean, we've thrown way more money to try to get Forsia, we've thrown way more money to try to do other things. We're splitting the costs with the south stoplight that's going in because the post office moved. That would be something that, and I'm not knocking you Mike, don't get this, this way. That, yeah, I, I think it'd be a worthwhile investment if we cover some of that cost to get somebody in here that's gonna bring revenue into this town. Or bring people off the interstate to come down there and spend money in this town. You know, that's, that's what we need to do.
Is Whataburger gone, is they, is that ship sunk on that one or it's still in play? in play?
The, the, the restaurant that was looking at that site is, you know, has still been in contact with us, almost daily over the past week.
That got a lot of attention, I mean, that, that, something like that goes, you'd be surprised, some people want that more than Forcia, I don't know why, but.
Is that the burger place we ate at when we were in San Antonio?
Yeah, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that just think that's awesome, so.
I didn't.
My kids love it.
We're still in contact with, with consultants regarding that site, so I would not characterize it as gone, lost opportunity at all whatsoever.
You got something? You done?
Are you gonna say diddow?
Yeah, diddow, let's help it out, let's make it work. Can I have a, go to another question with the EDC, just economic, I heard today, and this wasn't on Facebook, by the way, 'cause I do get all my info on that, but I heard today that the South Avenue and Seven Highway project was awarded, and parts were ordered for that, so I, we should be seeing something happen.
They've got the signs up.
Yeah, well, it, we should be seeing action here pretty quick.
You tell me to stop the, the traffic signal?
Yeah.
You do know the history on that, don't you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
State Representative Sheila Solan and I worked on that for a long time, as soon as they moved that post office down there.
Well, let's go to Blossom real quick.
Yes, yes.
So, and I know, I know Chris is just an expert at doing this stuff, are there other funds out there that we could maybe chase down, be grants or something through MARK, or, I know, I know MARK gets involved in funding, that we could get some help on that corner?
Very competitive, a lot more needs than there are.
Oh, I understand that, but I, you know.
And I haven't seen the last call for projects, did we qualify for any of that?
We're, we're in the middle of the pre-application process, so we won't know yet.
Well, MODOT's putting in strips of sidewalk that go nowhere.
Well, MODOT is repairing the sidewalk that is there that is not ADA compliant, and which is required by the DOJ. For economic development, the MARK funds are not available for that, if we were looking to make a change in the corridor in general, we could partner with MODOT and ask for improvements. In fact, in this latest round of requests, we are partnering, partnering with MODOT to widen and reconfigure the off-ramp from I-70 on the Seven Highway, in conjunction with the sidewalk project that runs from I-70 to 40.
East or west, which way we're going?
Be the eastbound off-ramp.
Thank you.
And then also making improvements to the intersection of 40 Highway and Seven, adding a double left turn for the westbound to southbound movement, and then also putting in pedestrian improvements on the intersection. Now, we're in the pre-application stage, we've turned that in, we're gonna work on that again in August and September, and we'll find out if we need to put together the second half of the application at that point. We've also asked for Double A Highway, we've asked for the south sidewalk that runs from 40 Highway, or from 40 Highway South to Lickah Road, we've also asked for the center section, now I guess that's all four projects, oh, and Woods Chapel Road, from 40 Highway to Walnut, are the four projects we've made requests for. Because although the section between Walnut and 40 Highway, and actually which encompasses both intersections of 40 Highway, is not in terrible shape, it could function much better if we widened it out, put the bicycle lanes on either side, and built it to a complete street standard.
And, and why are we changing Seven and 40? Is, is there a problem with Seven and 40?
The westbound to southbound movement stacks up, and we're not able to get the traffic efficiently through the intersection, which, when they stretch out the time for that southbound left turn movement, it takes time away from the other three legs, so if we can double that up, then we can actually improve the function of the entire intersection. And there is no good way for pedestrians to get across 40 Highway east, west, or north, south at this point, 'cause there's no pedestrian signals or assets for the intersection.
Okay, we're coming up on the hour, guys. Anybody else? We good at all or?
We probably should go, 'cause we're past the chief's bedtime.
I think I just wanna reiterate the fact that, that we need an economic development person, and you guys have done great, but you can't keep going like you're going.
Really, why not?
Something's gonna fall, something's gonna fall apart.
You're getting a bargain.
Okay, anybody else?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you, first of all, to the, the city council, all the staff that are listening and on this meeting electronically, all the staff that are here, we, you take me out of the picture, there's an amazing team of people who, who make all this stuff happen here every single day, and you need to know they're working hard for you every day. Thank you.
Hey, just one quick question, on our screens here, we've got Mike Mallon, but who's that guy over there?
It's the mask.
The man behind the mask.
Okay, unless there's something else, we're done. Thank you.